All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. A roll call starting on the left.
June Gagney.
John Meyer.
Carla DeStardins.
Roz Jibbit.
Brian Bray.
Mary Ann Chenoweth.
Katie Meehan. All right, all members are present. Public hearing, item A Z 2021 2144, continuation of Spicer Road Realty LLC requesting a special permit for earth excavation on property located on Black Hill Road, assessors map seven, block 53A, lot 55.
Good evening. I'm the chairman, we're proud to be commissioning staff for the record, my name is Rick Rivera. I'm a professional engineer and a principal of the town, here in town, the president Rivera. It's every time up here, it's wonderful to see an agenda this long, and it's even nicer to be working in your backyard, not driving an hour plus and then sitting there for three hours and driving an hour back, so it's certainly a pleasure working with you. That might seem like a broken record or a bad penny to keep spreading off, as you folks recall, this is going to be actually the third trip, and I think we started the presentation in January.
Can you speak up or use the microphone?
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody tells me to turn down a little bit, but yeah, this is the third month here. We did a presentation in January, February, we did another brief presentation, answered a couple of questions. We're actually waiting Wetlands approval. We actually, we see Wetlands approval on the 15th of last month, so here we are, you know, the third one, and certainly apologize. Again, Spicer Road Realty, which is actually Bruce Barnes from Barnes Concrete in Putnam, has proposed sand and gravel excavation on just under 20 acres of the roughly 15 acre site. It's proposed to be done in five, basically five phases, you know, roughly four acres or so per phase. All the grades are established on the plan, they're all based on borings in depth, I mean height above water table. This is actually going to be for Bruce's use himself. He runs a, you know, a concrete plant, a concrete operation he has for years. And quite frankly, the, you know, the amount of excavation here, we've based on what, you know, market demand is and what Bruce's needs are, so it's not your typical commercial operation. As noted in our excavation details, we plan on no more than 10 trucks a day. Basically, they'll, he'll leave a loader on site, there is a fueling pad and an equipment pad that's planned on the site. The loader will stay on site, the truck driver will come in, load himself, and haul back away. The improvement of the road was the only reason that we were at Wetlands the last time, or last month, and that was quite frankly, just for topping of the road and adding some erosion sediment controls. Is it, is an existing, you know, cart path, so to speak, that was a farm road at one point in time, so it has grown in and it needs some improvement. As we spoke the last time, the improvement is basically going to be essentially a 12-foot wide by roughly 10-foot to 12-foot high swath to be able to allow the trucks to come in. Two months ago, Colin, you had asked if maybe we could do an aerial to take a look, to see how much of the canopy would be taken down, and in fact, that's not really the case whatsoever. It's only been clear enough to get a single lane truck in, and the access road is actually oil drive, so to speak, is proposed to be 12 feet. I believe everything was, all the responses with Chuck and the town engineer were taken care of, Ryan. Do acknowledge Chuck sent a letter out today about correspondence with Eversource. We're going to leave that up to the owner before he gets it, does any excavation, certainly in the, you know, in the right way, he's going to have to work that out with them. And we concur, in fact, there's major grading issues, we may need to come back to you, but if anything, with Eversource, typically, you're going to be diminishing grades out of there and not taking more out, so that's, that's certainly acknowledged. Again, this is a, you know, continuation of a public hearing, but if there's any other questions or comments from the public, or you folks that are going to think, certainly be happy to do so.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or question on this application, if you could step up to the microphone, this is your opportunity. Going once? Yep, come on up.
Let's all start it off. Good evening. Wally Sweater, chairman of the Plainfield Conservation Commission. I just had a couple of comments, I did a little research today. This property is located on Black Hill Road, and I noted that Route 14A, there are nine abutters of this property, nine property owners that do abut this property, and I saw in the inland Wetlands meeting minutes, two of the, two of the abutters did have comments. So, there's nine abutters to this property, and if you want to take it, one more, the Cornell Cemetery is also abutting this property. There's three backlot abutters, OG is one of them, and it's a big gravel operation that is in town. That being said, there's other gravel operations in town, I counted, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 at a moment, ranging in size of 334 acres, OG, Plankton Materials, I think that's a gravel site too, 121 acres. There's one on Exley Road, 58.2 acres. There's also another one on Black Hill Road, 247 acres. And this proposed site is 52 acres, but supposedly only 20 acres is going to be used for the excavation. So that being said, on a conservation standpoint, there needs to be a balance, and the plan of conservation and development suggests that we limit gravel operations in this town, and I'm suggesting that too, also. In contrast, we have land trust in our town, the Wyndham Land Trust, there's six land trusts in this, in this town, in contrast, but the acres of the land trust, the biggest land trust is 34.1 acres, and then it gets less as we go down. So, that being said, I would ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider some kind of limits on gravel operations in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this application?
It's part of my comments. My name is Susan Hall, and I reside at 42 Water Street in Central Village. First of background information, in 2018, a group of civic-minded, dedicated residents diligently working on a very important document that state, that the state requires every 10 years. It is a document that describes the town's conservation and development plan. It can be found on the town's website on the planning and zoning page listed as plan of conservation and development. Pages 32, 33, 34 refer to the conservation of the town's natural resources. Some of the people on the 2018 Plan of Conservation and Development Committee are your friends, neighbors, and current conservation members. Their hope was that they would see positive changes from their ideas and suggestions in this town. What has happened since 2018? Developers from in-town and out-of-town, and private landowners have come before the town planner and the Plainfield Zoning Commission with their applications for excavation of rock, sand, soil, and logging. They have also submitted applications for permits from the Inland Wetlands and Water Cost Commission to access some of these resources of timber, soil, sand, and rock, and prime agricultural farmland from that commission. I spent time reading three years of minutes of these two commissions, and it is obvious to me that there is definitely an increase in excavating operations, timber removal, and now, uh, removal, by the way, of topsoil from a prime agricultural farm area. Recently brought before the Inland Wetlands and Water Cost Commission is a proposal, and I'm learning more about it tonight, so some of this has changed, but the proposal was and is to remove topsoil from 100-plus acres of prime farm land. This is the Plainfield class.
Miss Hall, I just have to, we have to relate your comments to the application before us, so if you're talking about another project, we have to bring it to this application.
Right, well, his is in here.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. This is the plain, given the name by Native Americans, plain field, the last crop cultivated on this land was hemp, but you remember the sod farm and corn for area cattle. There are many more examples, driving around and seeing the destruction of Route 14 towards Sterling. Major gravel operations on 14A are cutting through the forest land to Columbia Woods Neighborhood. How about Route 14, Black Hill area? Okay, with prime agricultural land being sold for solar farms, logging, more excavating of rock and sand. The mega excavating companies are just waiting to buy out all these small operations in the future. Permits are approved with conditions, but how can one zoning officer, how can he visit all these operations to see if they are in compliance? He can't. Already according to condition minutes, the proposed excavating operator for the prime farmland on Route 12 Route Road has removed soil without a permit twice. Unfortunately, citizens who are seeing this destruction close to their property lines are told that the current zoning ordinances allow this. Removal of natural resources could be 100 feet from all of your property lines, but maybe the excavating company might make an exception and change it to 150 feet, as was a concession to one of the property owners on Jackson Road. I'll never, never forget Ron Cody at your public meeting at that hearing, trying to protect his beloved property. He died soon after a cancer. The operation located on the Hopkins Hill will be cutting through Route 14 to Black Hill area for the next three decades.
Miss Hall, this public hearing is bound to this project, and I need you to refer to this.
Okay, I know, in closing, I suggest that you make changes to your ordinances to protect and limit the number of excavation operations, timber removal, removal of topsoil from prime agricultural land, and limit the number of solar farms. Read those pages, 32, 33, 34, from our town's plan of conservation and development. This was of utmost importance to these committee members, to protect Plainfield's natural resources. Remember, in-town and out-of-town developers, and now private landowners, will be back pushing for more of our resources. You already know who they are. It's like playing chess. The citizens are the pawns, the departments and commissions are the queens, and the developers are the king. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on this application? Were there any additional comments or questions from board members on this application? Any items for review from staff?
No, all items have gone through.
All right, so hearing, seeing no other public comments.
Would you like to make a motion to close public comment?
I have a motion to close public hearing. I have a second by Roz, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, I'll call the regular meeting to order. We do have an addition to the agenda under new business, item B Z 2022 2287, Amusup River Estates requesting an additional unit at property located on Ward Ave, assessors map 23, block 94C, lot 12, so we need a motion to add that to the agenda under new business. I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by June, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, added to the agenda. Citizen participation, this is opportunity to address the commission on an item that was not a public hearing item. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to unfinished old business, item A Z 2021 2144, continuation of Spicer Road Realty LLC requesting a special permit for earth excavation on property located on Black Hill Road, assessors map seven, block 53A, lot 55. And I just want to bring members' attention to the staff report where Ryan has, if it is decided to approve this application, there are some conditions of approval. MyLars are to be submitted for commission signatures, then reported by the applicant prior to receiving a zoning permit. Engineering review fees are to be paid within 30 days of billing or prior to filing MyLars, whichever comes first. A $50,000 cash or surety bond be submitted and kept current for the duration of the project for ENS controls and site restoration prior to receiving zoning permit. Correspondence agreement from Eversource regarding work within their easement is required to receiving a zoning permit. And after restoration of each phase, an as-built of that phase is to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office within 90 days of completion. As-built is to be performed by a surveyor A2/T2 accuracy and include the limits of excavation and area reclaiming, side slopes, grades, and final elevations. Are there any items for discussion? Oh, okay, um, so you just have to state it for the record.
Okay, I have to recuse myself on this. I live on Black Hill.
Okay, so we have a refusal of one member. So remaining members, any items for discussion?
There are a lot of conditions here. Is there any way to know that they're ultimately taken care of? Are they monitored?
Ryan, could you describe your process?
Yes, so there's a checklist required to receive the zoning permit, which the MyLars, the review fees, and the surety bond must be posted before they receive the zoning permit. Will also require the correspondence with from Eversource, and then I'll follow up when phases are complete, make sure it goes in A2 survey submitted.
Thank you. Any other items for discussion?
On the last condition, the as-built would have to be submitted prior to beginning the next phase.
They can start the next phase, because when they finish up the first phase, they have to start moving into the next phase before they can reclaim. So this states, the special permit states that there will be no more than two phases open at one point in time.
Right.
Any other items of discussion or clarification? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
It's very difficult after hearing the public speak about all the gravel operations that we have, it's hard for me to actually approve this. It really is difficult to, so, I guess, I'm just saying, it's very hard for me to do that. Somebody else wants to make a motion.
Can we think about it for a month? Is it next month?
Are you ready to make a decision tonight?
I'm hesitant to make the motion because I see their lack of, it seems that they have questions or want to review.
Okay, so we still have time in the timelines, so if the board determines they need to review the information that was presented tonight in order to make a decision, you can absolutely make a motion to continue to next month so that you can consider the information that was presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by June to continue. I have a second by John, all in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, continue to next month. And just let the record show that Roz will be received. Moving on to new business, item A Z 2022 2283 of United Ag and Turf Northeast requesting permission to construct a 7,780 square foot addition, paved modifications and drainage improvements on property located at 20 Excalibur Boulevard, assessors map 17, block 11, lot I 32 HC zoning district. Do we have applicant here this night?
We do not, they have requested us to set the public hearing, this is a special permit.
Okay, I didn't see that.
They requested that we set the public hearing for May 10.
Okay, so not next month's meeting then?
There was an update, please, sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. All right, so there's been a request by the applicant that we delay the public hearing until May, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by John to schedule a public hearing for May.
I'll second.
Second by June, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing in May. Item B, Z 2022 2287 of Amusup River Estates requesting an additional unit at property located on Ward Ave, assessors map 23, block 94C, lot 12. And am I right, this is a site plan modification, actually?
This is a site plan modification, so in 2018, the applicant came before us for a special permit for a four-unit acreage housing development. They only constructed 39, and now they're coming back for a 40th at a different location. So it does not require a special permit, we've already approved 40. This is just a site plan review to modify where it was located.
It's good to find that property on the same property.
Same property. If we flip to the next page after the staff report, we'll see what they're looking to place in.
Thank you. I'm the chairman, members of the commission, Norm Tivo, Killenley Engineering Associates. I'm here this evening representing Amusup River Estates for a, to add a single unit onto this existing development known as Amusup River Estates. I'm sure most of the commission members here are familiar with this. This project was approved in December of 2017. It was a special permit application and site plan review. The special permit application allowed for the construction of 40 units, and one of the units at that time was actually going to be the offices and so forth, but that, that was never built, and therefore, there are only 39 units that were actually showing the plans aside from that. So, the 40th unit that we're here before you, with is just to show you where that unit will be located. If I may, I'm going to grab this and kind of walk over there and show you. So currently, there are 33 units constructed, about 80%, and this proposed unit number 27 is going to be on the corner of Henry Drive and Grace Lane. We did receive approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission last month for this particular unit, and essentially, the unit is going to be placed in an area that's been kind of used as staging throughout the project. No additional clearing is going to be required there, no additional impact to the Wetlands and things of that nature. So, we are just putting this unit in this spot, raising it up a little bit, just to, you know, keep it elevated. I think also, as you know, there was, there was a question here too of, you know, the areas that were actually known as floodplain at the time, so it was our obligation way back when we first, we first did this project back in 2017, was to demonstrate to the commission and to FEMA, and by the way, we did, we did submit to FEMA, we went through the whole LOMA process, which is a letter of map amendment, and we demonstrated to FEMA that even though their map showed this as a flood area, they, we actually had it removed from the flood based upon the study that we did on the slot, so just wanted to sense that. It's not really a Wetlands Commission item, it is a Planning and Zoning Commission item. I just wanted to reassure the commission and remind the commission that that is something that we had to go through and went to it. Water and sewer are out there, they've all been installed, all the drive, all the driveways and roadways have been completed, the drainage has been completed, so this is simply a relatively simple site plan, adding this last 40th unit to the development, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments from staff on this application?
No, it's a fairly simple application. I have no comments on it.
You did submit a copy of the LOMA for the file, right?
It should be in your file already, yes, for the previous application.
2017 one, okay.
Any comments or questions from board members? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Motion.
I have a motion to approve by John, and a second by Roz, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, application is approved. Moving on to the approval of the February 8th regular and public hearing minutes, were there any changes or modifications to the minutes?
I think I thought it was typo, maybe. Unfinished old business, item B, page 260, the continuation of the conservation of the site. Motion made for application 2144.
Okay, do you see that on page three, Katie?
I don't know.
So, page three, item B, sub-paragraph motion, the numbers just don't match.
That's something that I have.
Good eyes, all right. So we have that one noted provision, so if there are no others, I'll entertain a motion to accept with that adjustment.
I'll accept with the adjustment of that number.
Okay, motion by June to accept with that modification, second by Frank, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting minute, and we have one extension, one extension. Meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to correspondence.
We have one item of correspondence, we received a letter from the DOT regarding a driveway that was applied for at 25 Park Road, and the plan that was submitted has been denied because sightlines coming out of the driveway go over neighboring parcels, they want sightline easement, they want the plans revised to show the relocation of the parking sign, and they also want a plan set at 40 scale or larger, so has nothing to do with us, it's just correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Anything under other? I don't see anything noted. Report from zoning enforcement.
All right, 14 Canterbury Row with the Tribolio. Progress had stalled over there, but he contacted me on February 20th, and said that he is working on moving the excavator, and it should be out of there very shortly. The backhoe was supposed to be out of there by today, I did not check to make sure that it was out there. I'll be doing that. Sweet LLC, 32 through 44 North Road, the previous touristy savings bank, that is still in court. 211 came down the road, that and property destruction equipment, that is also still in court. 13 Simmons Ave, Driscoll, where we have a junkyard, that is in court. Zero Large Road, Root Road, Root Fields, the Wetlands Commission approved that application for earth excavation on February 15th, and we are waiting for the application of public court planning and zoning. 40 Carbox Road Extension, PHH Mortgage Corporation for junkyard, most of the property is cleaned up, they still have to remove a few campers and a few boats from there, but they are working on that. 371 Fifth Road, basement apartment without permits, so there are no tenants in the apartment, they're waiting to see what we do with the ADU regulations to see how they they're waiting to see what we do with the ADU regulations to see how they're going to proceed. 552 Score Off Road, unregistered motor vehicles, this has been forwarded to the attorney, they're going to send out a demand letter to see if we get a response. 256 Paulden Road, RV is dwelling, nobody is residing in the RV, and they have until the end of March to remove the RV along with a couple of trailers. Now, Amusupon Road, the Wood Stanley property for dead trees, they'll be working on replacing the trees in the spring. 185 187 Main Street, Amusup, illegal third floor apartment, as of February 22nd, the occupants of the apartment had moved out, and the owner of the property is looking to see if he could potentially convert the third floor into additional living space for the second floor apartment, so he's going through the building inspector for that. If that is unable to be done, he'll be removing everything from there. 8 Lafayette Ave, Reginald Gagnon, mobile home has accessory structure, so there's a mobile home on the property that was towed in, they're using it basically as an outbuilding, as a shed. I sent a letter out a few weeks ago asking them to contact me as that is not allowed use, and there was no response, so today I sent out a letter, certified mail, asking them to contact. 699 North Road, the here properties LLC, this is barbershop down the street, there's a, an apartment in the building without permits, and I did send out a letter asking them to contact me, and they have yet to do so.
Were there updates that we need to discuss in executive session or is that written?
We do have updates if you want to, they are written here if you want to, but if you want to discuss them, we go into the committee session.
Did commission members want to discuss any of the court cases? If so, we will go into executive session, and if not, we will just move on. So hearing no questions, we will forego executive session tonight. A report from planning and zoning.
The only thing additional to my written report is public informational meetings scheduled for the 24th of March at 7:00 regarding the Shepherd Hill Elementary School Safety Improvement Sidewalk Project, so those plans will be presented.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by John to adjourn.
Second.
Second by June, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody.